Good evening, everyone. My name is Mitch Cohen. I chair the Northborough Select Board and welcome to the Select Board meeting of February 26, 2024. As always, I've got some opening remarks. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023 relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda, ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will of course feature public comment. I will go around the virtual room and make sure everyone can hear and be heard in order on my screen. We have Laura Zeiten.
Here.
Julianne Hirsch. Okay, Julianne is currently muted. I'll go back to you in a second. How about Lisa Mazzelli?
Here.
Kristin Wixted.
Here.
And Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
We have Assistant Town Administrator Diane Wagel.
Here.
And we have Northborough Cable Owen with us to help us with the technical stuff. And I'm sure Tim McInerney will be back with us shortly once we come back into public session. Um, and at this point, let's see. Is our agenda written? I just want to make sure we've got it right. That we are doing executive session first. Yes, we are. So executive session. Uh, we're going to be doing this until about seven o'clock and then once we are done with executive session, as always, we will return to open session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive sessions pursuant to NGL Chapter 30A Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, essay farm, and pursuant to NGL Chapter 30A Section 21A7 for the review and consideration of the December 18, 2023 executive session meeting minutes. Due to the Chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
Second.
Hey, motion made by Laura. I think I heard Kristen first for a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Laura.
Hi.
Kristen.
Hi.
Julianne.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. We are now going to executive session. I'll see members of the board in that meeting and I'll see the public when we conclude. Bye bye.
Thanks.
And welcome back to the public session where we'll wait another moment or two for everyone to return before we formally begin our business. I think the only person at this point we're waiting for is Tim once he's in will resume.
Oh, anybody getting cold? Feel chill. We're gonna get a heating blanket on, my god.
Pretty warm day for the end of February.
Yeah.
Cooler again.
I walked to Arrow.
Ooh.
This morning for my community affairs thing with Chief Parent.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was a nice walk. And I had a scone, Mitch.
Eat very scone, iced?
With frosting, yeah. Of course. I had the last one, actually.
Glad it didn't go.
Were you waiting on Tim?
Yeah. Yeah, he told me he'd be in a minute.
Oh, okay. Well, it's kind of disappointing hearing that not much was really accomplished.
We're, we're in open session. Just, yeah.
I doubt we weren't.
Yep. Now, once we come back here, public. Appropriate to talk about scones.
Okay, I get it.
Oh, Tim is, is in the attendees waiting. All right, I'll promote Tim to a panelist.
Oh, I came in as a.
Yeah.
I had that problem myself.
That's all right. Yeah, we've all done that.
Sorry about that. I barred myself from my own meeting.
Should try to say.
That is okay. All right. We ready to get started again? Okay, so here we are back from executive session and our first thing as always after returning to open session is public comment. If there is a member of the public that wishes to make a comment on anything, ideally things not on our agenda, please raise your electronic hand because as always I'll be happy to recognize you during an agenda item. I don't see any hands up. We'll wait another moment. Going once. Going twice with note takers. I will declare public comment. Closed. Next up, we have approval of meeting minutes. Now, the January eighth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes, there was a last minute editorial change made to and it was just one bullet point on Lisa's report that we received somewhere around four thirty PM. So that's the version under discussion. No other changes were made there. But the board members have seen that. Does someone have a motion? On those meetings?
Yes, I move the board vote to approve the version of the January eighth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes dated today at four twenty seven PM as presented.
Second.
A motion made by Lisa seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Lisa?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye, vote unanimous in favor. Meeting minutes are approved and again, those are just slightly different than the version of the agenda packet, but you will see those approved version when they get posted on the town website. The January twenty second meeting minutes were not, not distributed, so those will be held until our next meeting. So we'll pass over that item and next up we have review of preliminary town meeting warrant summary. We have a lot of articles. Sixty-three in the latest version. Tim, you wanna walk us through this? I see, I see Jason Little in the, in the waiting room. Do you want to bring him in or is he just waiting in case something comes up?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a lot of work that he's been doing behind the scenes in this, so I can give you the cliff notes. Obviously, we don't have the detailed draft of all the articles. But Jason and I and the school district and staff have been working to get this together so you can sign these for the eleventh. So no, the short answer is no, not at this point, but he is, he is waiting in the event that the board has particular questions that I might not be able to answer due to, you know, the length of time in the position. So I just want to highlight the chair covered sixty-three articles. I want to apologize. We got you an update today. We had missed a couple school related articles for solar, so I'm just going to cover the articles in a brief summary and then you can, we can go through and answer any questions that the board has. So sixty-three articles. The prior year bill, we don't anticipate. This is just a placeholder that we will probably pass over. Your thirteen zoning articles, I believe the hearings were held last week by planning. I haven't seen the report or the disposition of the reporting of those, reporting out of those, but I assume they're favorable because they made it on to this warrant. So thirteen zoning, six CPA articles, nineteen capital improvement articles, five school related articles, four of those are for lease, lease purchase for solo rooftop for, for their school buildings. Article forty-seven, just of note, you may not have ever seen this before, but you actually rescind excess borrowing authorization for completed projects.
I'm very happy we're doing this.
So it's just a housekeeping item. I think Jason was on it before I left and then brought it back to our attention and we are cleaning up five articles, Brigham Street well, a green repair at the middle school, Lincoln Street school feasibility, Lincoln Street. I guess it's ad reno. I can't really see the next words on that. And then Church Street Bridge. So those were all amounts that were, the, the projects completed and it's issued in un, unused authorized amounts. We want to rescind those and get those off of our books. Also, I have had, I mean, you have a lot of capital improvement articles. There's a lot of work to be done on these with the financial planning committee that we're meeting with tomorrow night, but I am I know you have a history of breaking them out. It's just, it seems lengthy. So I am having conversations with the moderator if we can have one article to do with the capital plan and we can speak to the whole plan and both things separately, but we'll save some ink if we don't have to print nineteen of them. But that's, you know, it doesn't mean we're going to do it. It just means we're talking about it. And then if there's anything that the board has that's, that we're missing, I think that's the main reason why you have this meeting to talk about this in draft form. So if we miss something and I don't want to put you on the spot, but you know, we have a, you know, week and a half to, to get a full document with you know, all of the language worked out on it. So if you have something, do you, do you see the now or later? Can you get it to us so we can get it on, get it on the warrant for a town meeting? But you will be asked to sign the warrant on the eleventh of March. So that's, that's the summary.
Okay. You know, I have a couple of things that I wanted to sort of highlight and ask some questions about, but I'll put up to members of the board first. If there are any, any questions about articles or categorization or items that may be missing, Lisa?
This is my first time going over a draft, so I do have a couple of questions. Is this all we go, this is all the document we have to approve is just what we have in the draft or do we get description? Do we get cost? Do we get anything like that? So the next time we see this, is it like the full warrant that's going to be passed out and printed?
It'll be the document you notify the inhabitants that you're having a town meeting to discuss these articles. So you'll have article forty-nine zoning by law, design review, and then it'll have a paragraph submitted by. So you have details, you won't have motions yet, but you'll, those, those motions are being developed as we go through all of these committees and subcommittees relative to the budget and capital plan.
Okay. And with that in mind, I, you know, I sat in appropriations and listened to the, the DPW budget already, which was, I'm assuming different than what I see here because this must be going to finance, must be capital planning as opposed to what we talked about on the appropriations meeting.
Yes, we, all we did with AC appropriation committee was just the operational budget, financial planning handles your capital improvement planning articles.
Okay, so, so with everything going on, have we discussed maybe backing off on some of these DPW requests that are in the capital planning because of everything else that's coming forward? You've got new, possibly a new town hall, you've got, you know, some new, new costs, I think, just on a new personnel coming in. And, and I'm assuming, again, this is my first time does going to, because I've sat in financial planning as well, do they take into consideration the the costs or the budget that has been already talked to in appropriations? So that they say that their appropriation said, okay, I'm going to give you ten dollars and we're going to bring it into, to the capital planning and the capital planning says, well, I want, you know, five hundred dollars. Is it then five hundred and ten dollars? Are they two separate things where the monies that are being requested for? Do I make myself?
Yeah, let's, if we pull apart the budget for operations, that's going to be separate. And that's out of your raisin appropriate, the amount of, the amount of money you get from state aid, local receipts and taxation, and that's your day to day operation. Anything like a fire station, a library, a new town hall, those are all things that will ultimately be determined by select board, a town meeting for an appropriation and then ultimately a question to the ballot for an override for debt exclusion for those items. So I, I think they're mutually exclusive. I think those things, I think there'll be input from capital improvement planning relative to those debt exclusion projects. But for me, and I'm new, but at the end of the day, it's up to the select board because you got to place the ballot question on and town meeting to appropriate money. And I think there's so many things ahead of like the town hall, because we can talk about that tomorrow. Like the fire station, it, you know, we got to set some priorities. I'm trying to do that at the same time. I'm trying to, I'm trying to fly the plane and build it at the same time. So just, it'll happen. You'll see, you know, the FTMS plan that Jason's working on that we're working on to give you a clearer picture of what those impacts are from an operational standpoint with the budget and what that growth may be. And then the capital improvement plan when you need extra dollars to do those projects. So you're going to see all those, not just like we're going to do these and spend all this money. It's still going to have a lot of checks and balances along the way.
So, so this, this draft warrant is going to come to us and, and we can then discuss some of these articles. Is it a necessity for this and is it a necessity for that, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think any of these articles, it ends up being your warrant. Some, some chart is allowed for a different, like a duly elected body or duly appointed committee usually can submit an article and sponsor an article. I haven't, you know, looked into that detail relative to who has authority, but I picture it as being the, the warrant to be the warrant of the select board notifying the inhabitants of a, of a, of a public town meeting.
Okay, so then.
Think you have that authority. Short answer is yes.
Okay, so then what time do we get to look at it and include both of the costs? Like, because we're going to, we're the fiduciary responsible party, right? So we have to look, and again, I'm asking because I've never done this before, but don't we have to look at what we're asking for that will then be what the taxpayers pay in their daily increases?
Yes. And I would, I would, I would love to tell you that you're going to have it all by the eleventh and have, you know, every piece of this capital improvement plan ironed out or the budget article for number four. It's going through a process with committees that, one of the committees just got a full membership that can meet tomorrow night. So we're all have to learn together on what the things that are asked for and what might be appropriate to fund.
Okay.
While they may live on the article or on the warrant, I would, I would guess between the eleventh and the twenty-second. I would, I would guess between the eleventh and the twenty-second, all of those pieces, all that dust is gonna settle. And you're gonna take a position, one way or the other, on articles inside this warrant.
Alright.
In order to give notice, that's all this is doing. These are the things we're considering, and I'm just under such a compressed time unfortunately, to get all these pieces out and done. So while we're committing to give notice, we're not committing to spend the money.
Okay.
You gotta figure that out before the twenty-second of April.
Okay, and can I ask two more questions? Can I ask a question about what happened at appropriations the other night? Or no, this wouldn't be the time for that?
I don't know if it's too main to the article, I, I don't, I don't know.
Well, again, it's in, it's in the budget, it's not in the capital, it's in the, the operating.
I would, my suggestion is maybe wait until we talk about the budget, which would probably, which would, I, I'm hoping at our next meeting, we will get an updated budget. Um, some budget details and talk about that. That was, yeah, it was gonna be one of the things I was gonna mention. I know we just have Article Four Town Budget and that's all the detail we have for that, but I'm hoping we can further that along, you know, now that you're gonna be beginning to meet with appropriations, we might get some detail next time.
Okay, that's fine, I just want to get a placeholder for that. The second one was there's some discussion of having, you can now get a full complement of the financial planning, which means you got six people. Um, did we take care of that issue that we were talking about earlier, or do we discuss that?
Uh, there were two pieces of that, um, which we, I think we answered half of it appropriately, then we had to ask town council. So that's, again, it, it's a, it's a matter we need to resolve, I just don't want to have a complete answer.
Okay, but we will by tomorrow, or when? I mean, you were saying financial planning is meeting tomorrow, or is that-
Yeah, they are meeting. So if, if there's a problem with the membership makeup, we will resolve that before them.
Before them. Alright, because then that's something, when, when do we weigh in?
I don't think we have a role to weigh in on that, we don't have a, a pointing authority over appropriations.
Right.
Or fa- or financial planning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Julianne?
So is this a meeting where we can ask for explanations about some of these articles? Like, first of all, Article-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Article twelve, what does that mean? Adoption of provisions of building rental fund?
So I'm gonna use, I'll use the term that you're probably accustomed to hearing, a revolving account. But it's not a revolving account, it's just when we, we have a dentist in there now that pays a lease money, we want to use that lease money to offset the cost to run that building. This, this Article twelve will allow us to do that.
Okay, um, alright, next question, Article fifteen, police cruiser replacements, what kind of vehicles are those? Are those hybrid, electric, regular?
Uh, it's a replacement of a, of a rescue, it's a, it's a rescue vehicle. Uh, I, I, maybe Jason has that capital planner from, can tell you how old that rescue is. It's been on your capital improvement plan for a number of years, I think it's slated for two thousand twenty-five.
No, 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 I, I-
The one prior, I think is-
You know what, I, I have the wrong numbers. So it's the one before that, police cruiser.
It's a, it's a gas, gas-powered vehicle, Chevy, Chevy Towels.
Two of them?
Correct.
Okay, well, so when do you have the discussion? Because there's been a lot of um, requests in town for going gre- cleaner, cleaner and greener, and I, you know, will they tell us why they chose a, you know, a gas-powered vehicle over a hybrid or a?
Well, I, I can tell you just don't have infrastructure to charge vehicles at any municipal-
That's true.
There's no infrastructure to charge an electric vehicle.
What about some of those hybrids?
Yeah, hybrid doesn't require charging.
Doesn't, yeah.
Yeah, that's true, but they don't make a, a hybrid police car.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't think, yeah, I don't think that's accurate. I, I, I think um, a number of towns do have hybrid police cars. I, I don't know the models off the top of my head, but I, I think that's-
You're right, I mean, if you, if you bought a, a Ford Escort or a Ford, uh, but for the, I, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to the chief that they want uh, solidarity and model, and that's why they're just staying with the models that they have for repair, ease of use, I think they, those vehicles they have now last longer, so you could get a vehicle, you just won't get this vehicle as a hybrid, the one that they're requesting. But again, that's why you have this financial planning committee to ask those type of questions too, and we, we, I can take that question back to the chief as well.
Uh, you know, speaking of that, Tim, um, appropriations on their agenda, I don't believe they had the opportunity for public questions and comments. And I really hope that the financial committee, planning committee will have an opportunity for people to ask questions. Be- because by the time it gets to town meeting, you know, people, people say, oh, you know, this is not the place to, to ask the details. So can we ensure that those two committees?
I have one small solution to that, and it's using local cable to talk about articles with either the, the clerk, myself, a department head, the town moderator, whomever, just to kind of excerpt and not taking a position, but just providing information in terms of cost, why something was selected, and letting people have at least two or three minutes of the discussion relative to why Chevy Towel is superior to, to Ford Crown Victorias, even though they don't make those anymore. Uh, well, you know what I mean? And then, the second piece of that is, for me, I there's a lot of information to get at town meeting, if you're just walking in, you get handed this, you gotta make all these decisions. We have to provide some mechanism. The committee's awesome, but if you can't make it, you can watch it, but you should be able to call us and ask the question that you're asking now, that I don't have answers to everything, but I, I will track them down before town meeting to make town meeting go more smoothly and provide, you know, access to us and to whomevers, you know, advocating for these articles so they can provide information back to whomever calls or emails us. So that's, that's the purpose of, you know, that I, that's what I want to do with cable TV and getting information out there to the public.
So, so are you saying that at, as the meeting is going on, or at the end, that, that these committees will, appropriations and finance will allow, you know, maybe just a couple people go, but they have good questions and?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to the chairman, I will certainly recommend that they do that. I know the last meeting I went to, a member of the audience was there, raised a hand, asked a question, and I think we answered it, I don't remember the details of it, but-
Yeah, but it's, it's different if it's on the agenda versus, you know, at the discretion of the chairperson at the moment, because I might not go to a meeting if, if it doesn't say on the agenda that there's gonna be public comment. Okay, so, um, so we're gonna get an explanation on the police station siding and what happened with the money we allocated for the previous painting and-
They'll have the seventy thousand in that article, you're gonna add more money because the wood is rotted on the outside of that building, so in order to secure the, the exterior, the, the idea is to side the building.
Okay.
What if we don't want it to be sided?
Well, then you'll tell capital improvement planning committee, and I, but you gotta do something to secure the building so it doesn't keep taking water.
Right.
That was our, that was our cheapest and best solution.
Wow.
And some of those decisions were made prior to December eleventh, so I'll just, you know, if I can build a new building, I would, but-
You can try. Okay, alright.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a, make a suggestion to the board and, and Tim, tell me if I'm off base here, if, if members of the board see articles uh, on this draft that they may not want to support, meaning may suggest that they not, either change substantially or not go, not go on the final warrant, let us know as early as possible. Have a discussion with Tim about your concerns so that we can fully vet that process on the eleventh, because the eleventh is when we have to sign the warrant. And making decisions on the spot to, for example, not buy police cruisers, and I'm only mentioning that one just because that was one that was just discussed, or not siding the police station, or whatever it is, um, is a little risky. Um, because we might not have all the information if, if it wasn't vetted ahead of time, so that's my request to do that. Kristen?
Um, so as far as the police cruisers go, I remember last year someone asked Chief Liver this question because I think it was his or one, one of the cruisers needed to be replaced. And uh, he said he did do some research, if I remember correctly. He said he did do some research on trying to find electric vehicles, it was just gonna take a really long time to get them, if they ordered them, they weren't gonna come in nearly enough time. So there was a time constraint there. I remember, as far as the, the infrastructure goes, that I'm sure is a hundred percent correct, however, it takes two seconds for an electrician, okay, not two seconds, but it's a very simple matter to put a charging.
Kristen, we've lost your audio. Uh, no, now you're back, I think.
I was making such a good point.
Yes.
No, it just, it isn't that big a deal to put an electric charging station in any kind of garage that has electricity in it, so it shouldn't be a huge deal for the town to add those if they did want them. That, that wouldn't really be a thinking point. I do think it was last year anyway, because it was gonna be a really long delay to get electric vehicles, but I do think it's something we should keep talking about. And now with Chief Griffin in charge, you know, he took over at a weird time, I think mostly this police budget is, is still Chief Liver's budget, because Chief Griffin didn't come on till quite late in the year, or right at the beginning of this year, but maybe for next year, that's something, you know, we could have all the pieces of the puzzle put together. And that could be something that does change, so. And then I had a question about the um, ris- Article forty-two rescinding, whatever it was. So, um, could you just give an example of one or two of those?
Uh, Church Street Bridge was voted four twenty-five sixteen, it was Article number twenty-three. You authorized a million twenty-seven thousand and you are rescinding the unissued a hundred, you used nine, uh, nine hundred twenty-seven thousand of that, one million twenty-seven, so you're rescinding the vote of a hundred thousand of the original one hun- one million twenty-seven thousand.
Because we just didn't need all the money to do the project?
Yeah.
Right, that's like hurt money.
You didn't borrow it, so it's not available to you, so I don't want you to be accused. You, you didn't borrow it, you're just rescinding what you were allowed to borrow.
Oh, okay.
So it's almost like you had a line of credit, but you reduced it by calling the credit card and said, I don't want a thousand, I want five hundred.
Okay.
So that's what you, that's what you're doing, you're still over five hundred.
Yeah. Okay, alright, thank you for explaining that.
Okay, Lisa?
Is Julianne done with her questions before I ask?
Are you done?
Well, you, you go ahead, because I do have some more, but I'll, I'll wait my turn.
Well, it was. Okay, um, I, a couple of questions. In Article thirty-four, feasibility study for Margaret Peaslee Elementary School, what is that to put solar on the roof, or what's that feasibility study?
That's a, that's the feasibility, so at either our last meeting or the meeting prior, we sent a letter to MSBA saying we would like to be part of a feasibility, basically part of feasibility for the Peaslee School. Uh, MSBA subsequently came back and said, yeah, good idea. So the next step is for us to allocate, approve money to actually start a feasibility study for that school.
Yeah, we already, we did that already several years ago, we put the money aside.
At town meeting, for, for Peaslee? Okay, yeah, I, I would, I would probably say ask Tim, you know, to ask Jason to go ahead and see if there is already money approved and, and if it's sufficient funds.
I think it was a hundred, hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, I would anticipate a feasibility for a school to be substantially more.
Maybe, maybe, I mean, if, if you have particulars, you want to bring Jason in, Mr. Chair, just because-
It's good with me, I, I, okay. Alright, Jason, per your, per your boss, I'm bringing you in.
And I, I'm sure he knows.
Yeah. Jason, if you could unmute and if you'd like turn on your camera. Maybe he stepped away for a moment.
Nope, I told him.
Put him in, so yeah, he, he knows.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to log in.
Yep.
Can, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Um, yeah, I'm not aware of any feasibility study for Peaslee School. Um, I know, um, I believe that's been in the, the capital plan as a TBD for some time. But, uh, yeah, they're, they're, they're gonna be moving forward, I, I believe, you know, when they, they'll be coming before capital planning tomorrow night, so the, I'm sure they'll be discussing, um, the Peaslee School and it, and its state, but, uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of there being any articles out there for, for a feasibility for Peaslee.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't have even started a feasibility without going to MSBA first, because the, the process is MSBA invites you into the timeline, you know, into their schedule, and then you start feasibility and, and you seek the funding for that.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll look it up and if-
Yeah, there could be, it could be something related, and maybe there was something approved and not spent, that maybe there's some money out there, um, you know, spent a little bit last time.
I, I can speak to that, there, there's, there's no outstanding money for, for Peaslee School. Um, there may have been a, a former roof project or a smaller project that, that had been done at the school. Um, off, off the top of my head, I'd, I'd have to look further into it, I don't have that in front of me, but I know coming forward, the, the more substantial feasibility is gonna be discussed for, for the next elementary school renovation project, and it looks like Peaslee is the next one in the pipeline to, to get renovated.
Okay, thanks. Um, can I go and ask a couple more?
Absolutely.
Alright, so on Article seventeen, DPW facilities, facility HVAC upgrades, modernization. That's kind of a pretty big blanket. Where is it gonna be used?
Jason, do you have that? No, I don't have it.
Um, these articles are simply summaries of what's been requested, I, I don't have the details of everything in, in these articles. As, um, capital planning meets or, or financial planning meets, they'll, um, I'm, I'm sure these details will, will be revealed.
Yeah, we, we'll certainly have those details, uh, in advance for our meeting on the eleventh, I don't, I could, I could take some guesses by the title, but I, I don't want to just guess.
Okay, so it's probably better that we wait until, we could save time waiting until, uh, financial planning meets tomorrow night. I mean, that's, you know, that's a thought. And I thought I saw in here somewhere about electric school buses, was that on this or was that someplace else?
Seen that.
Because I looked at, I looked back and forth and I couldn't find it either, and I don't remember where I saw it, but I was like, who would have an electric school bus?
I talked to somebody once about that, I'll see if I can find their name. Yeah. It wasn't a select board thing, I was at a work thing for my husband, but it was a really interesting conversation I had with this woman who works with trying to get electric school buses into town, so.
Right now, the towns don't own, own any school buses.
Right, yeah, I, I don't know, I mean, I saw it someplace to have a discussion, but I just wanted to make the comment that if Tesla, i- if their cars get in an accident and they flame, and they can't put out the flame, I hate to see a school bus of children that that happens to.
Well, there, there are no, there are no electric school buses being proposed under the warrant.
Put me down on that.
We, we could, we could have a lot of conversations about that some, some other day.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I'm gonna let this stuff go until then because
Okay.
Probably more detailed information.
Laura?
Thank you so much, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this list so far. Um, my, I'm more of a comment than a question. I am concerned about the costs that are gonna be associated with a lot of these projects. I just know in my professional position, we've been asked to really save money and look at ways to cut our expenses because, you know, we've got to make our money stretch longer, so as financial planning, as staff, as people are reviewing this, I just really want to- financial planning, as staff, as people are reviewing this, I just really want to just convey how much financial pressure our residents are under, how much we are under pressure financially, both at home, at work. And so if there's a way to really, to let our projects go a little bit longer, if it's not gonna negatively impact the overall well-being of the town, it would be really helpful. But this, this huge, um, warrant has a lot of amazing things on it that I'm really excited about, but I just wanna stress, we can't afford it. And, and not everything, but we could be in for a very long period of, of financial constraints. And I know that that is especially present for our friends who are on fixed income. And it's affecting those of us who are not on fixed income. It's, it's, it's a big problem. And I just, I appreciate all the thought and I, I would love nothing more than to have infinite budgets to make it possible. But I just wanna recognize, like, we've all got to really tighten our purse things. And so I'm looking at this and I'm waiting for the numbers. That's really, it's gonna be very important for me to understand how critical these projects are to well-being of the town. So thank you for all your work so far. And I just wanna make that point while we're waiting the final numbers and the descriptions behind these project, um, articles.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just for context, they all, they look like there's a lot of capital and there is. But you, you have a plan that's been rolled every year to do certain projects. And we're only looking at, for, for most of these, uh, it's within your free cash policy to use free cash for these items. There's some items that, like that heavy rescue, I think it's a million two. Uh, you, you only have, you know, one point nine in free cash that's usable after you do, um, you know, stabilization and OPEP, so it's what I think we're seeing throughout the municipal market, the longer, you know, if these things don't have to be done, we shouldn't even talk about. But the longer you put any of these off, the cost, you, you can't even guess how much, you know, a building would have cost ten years ago versus what it is today. It's probably six times what it was ten years ago. So I don't wanna burden anybody's children with that, so we gotta at least have a conversation about what's the priority and then what can people afford. And I don't wanna put anybody in strife financially. So that, I mean, I think that's part of what the committee's role is too, to, to assess, you know, how to best allocate, to make operations run more efficiently and smoothly, just like the LED lights, those small things that we do will, will drive down hopefully long-term operating cost. I'm not so sure all of these items are gonna do that. Um, but there's some things you need to plow sidewalks, you need a piece of equipment that works. So it's, I mean, it's all those things taken collectively gets very expensive, but it, it's not lost on me. It is gonna, it is gonna cost people money.
Um, I've got a couple of questions. Um, are, I, I think the answer is no, but are any of these items, uh, potentially debt or capital exclusion items, or are these all, all funded within the levy limit?
No, I think, I, Jason, we're gonna propose, I think the fire truck.
Um, yeah, but no- nothing, sorry to, to jump in. Yeah, no- nothing here is, none, none of these articles are proposed to be debt exclusions. They're, they're, they're all within there, there may be, um, the fire truck, I think we've discussed, there is gonna be a, a debt, a borrowing authorization, but, um, likely everything else will be within, funded within available funds.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um, on behalf of the Fire Station Building Committee, um, uh, it was brought up at one of our recent meetings that, you know, given that that's a major capital undertaking, um, you know, there won't be any funding sought at this meeting, uh, most likely in the fall. Um, whether we could have, you know, possibly within the capital plan projects, a brief presentation that the Fire Station Building Committee could provide um, as an update to town meeting on the pending project. I've seen that done in other towns. Again, there's no, there's no approval being sought, no money being spent on that project here. But, uh, perhaps if you could discuss with the moderator, possibly, you know, either inserting an article for, for a report on that item, maybe at the end of the capital items, or, um, or just an understanding that that will take place and, you know, hopefully not more than a five or 10 minute, uh, you know, presentation, just so that the town gets an update as to where things stand. It would be helpful.
So, Mr. Chair, could, would the last article suffice or would you want it?
Nobody's, so, so there is, there is reports. Nobody stays for that. What happened, what, what? I've never seen any reports provided there. Um, a- and if we keep it to the end, no one's gonna be there. My, my suggestion is at the conclusion of the capital items, so, you know, between thirty-three and thirty-four as it is on this draft would be a good spot for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, eh, doesn't help us this time, but and, and I appreciate this as being uniquely rushed with you just joining us and everything else. And Jason, thank you just coming back. Um, but, you know, for future years on a list like this, it, I think it would be good to have dollar figures next to the financial items, at least, you know, at, at, you know, best guesses at this point. We don't have to worry about that now. That's thinking for future years. Um.
So for the draft review?
Yeah, yeah, under, on, yeah, exactly.
That makes sense.
Yeah, um. The, uh, you know, in terms of items missing, I wouldn't say missing because we hadn't talked about them. There are a couple of general bylaws that very recently, within the last few days, have, have come up that we may want to consider amendments for. Um, you know, one is the appointment uh, to financial planning and whether you could serve on other committees while being on financial planning that just came up and is, you know, potentially making it difficult for them to have a full board. Um, and then at a recent meeting, we had a lot of discussions about, uh, municipal code and bylaw and possibly a couple of cleanup aspects there. Um, I may, uh, take another look at, at those two and I may send a couple of suggestions. Board members, feel free to do the same on those items. Um, general bylaws don't have to go through a formal hearing process the way that zoning bylaws do. So we can, you know, make those changes pretty simply. Um, obviously, we don't wanna have them reviewed by council and everything else. So, you know, it might be too late for those, but eh, it came up as, as an idea. Uh, something else I have raised before and we did do last year was raise the income threshold for, um, some of the, uh, the senior tax options. We, we did do that last year. We raised it to the maximum and then I think in September, um, when the governor, Lieutenant Governor came to our senior center, that was to announce raising them again, raising the, the legal maximum. So, um, I, I would really like to keep up with that. Um, and anything we can do to improve. And I know those limits are still really low, even with the new maximums, but do the best we can. Um, and I already mentioned, uh, earlier that I think it would be good to have a budget draft at our next meeting also. Um, going through some of the articles from my notes, um, yeah, I'm not gonna, uh, beat the whole hybrid cruiser, uh, thing to death, but it's important to keep that alive. Westboro had, i- is much further along this than we are. They have one elect, fully electric police car. Um, it's a sergeant's vehicle. It's really nice. I saw it at, at an EV show in Westboro a few months back, and I believe they have a number of hybrid cruisers, uh, you know, regular line cruisers as well. There are some good reasons that, uh, fully electric cars, cars that need to be plugged in occasionally are better for sergeants than for, uh, for line police cruisers. So I, I had a really good conversation with, I think their sergeant, um, who regularly drives that vehicle, uh, at that expo. Uh, it was, it, it was really, really an interesting conversation. Um, fire station brick repointing and sealing. I'm just curious why we are doing this while we are also replacing that building. Um, if Tim or Jason, if you don't have that information, that needs to go through, um, you know, another, another group first, that's okay. But that's my first thing is why are we spending money on, on that building when I really hope in two years, the fire station will no longer be there? Um.
Um, th- through the chair, I'm, I'm sorry. This is a new laptop. I don't know if you can see me. I can't see my image on.
We cannot, we cannot see you. We see a, a really funny looking icon.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Jason, and on your laptop in the middle of the top of it is a little thing that you can slide over.
Yeah, it's, it's the, the, oh.
Hey, there you are.
There I am. All right, I didn't see it. All right, the, like I said, it's a brand new laptop, so it's, I'm fumbling around a little bit with it. Um, yeah, so again, the, the intention was to list all the articles and get the articles into this draft. Um, I don't have all the information about, um, all of the, the facilities requests. As you know, um, Sean's relatively new position to the town and this is his first year where we've made it through to the capital plan and um, now we're seeing like a public works, uh, facilities, um, requests. So we've, we've appointed him, he, I did, we've done a number of needs assessments in the buildings. Um, and this is the first round with, with Sean putting together his recommendations for, um, for, for, you know, what we need to do to the buildings. So, um, my guess, if I had to hazard one, was that this was some kind of, of safety issue at the, at the fire station because we're, we're not moving day one to, to a new fire station once it's approved and there's gonna be some time to, that they're gonna still be occupying the old fire station. That, that, that's my, that's my take. It's a guess. Um, but, but anyway, like I said, I think that these will be presented more as we go through the, the capital planning process.
Yeah, I mean, like, my assumption of the fact that it's being, you know, i- is that it's something is necessary to preserve the integrity of the building for some possible future use. Um, you know, if it's not that, we probably shouldn't be doing it now, but, um, we'll, we'll learn more by next week. Um, I am very excited about the, uh, the lease and power purchase agreements for three of our schools. I think they're, they're also working on one for Algonquin that doesn't need to go through us. That just goes to the regional school committee. So these are, I attended a school committee presentation a few months back on this. Um, so these are zero dollar items. These are to approve leases longer than three years. So town meeting needs to approve any lease that's longer than three years, uh, which is why they'll be there and that will, you know, I'll, I'll leave it to the school committee to present that, but that will put, um, uh, solar panels on a number of roofs, uh, as well as a, a canopy panel in the Malekhan parking lot was the last plan that I saw there. Uh, and that's, that's really good stuff. Um, I'm hoping in the near future, Tim, that we can possibly get a little bit more of an idea as to the acquisition of four thirty-two Whitney Street in terms of, um, recommended financial breakdown. I'm not asking for the, for that now. Um, but in the near future, you know, I, I assume actually for the warrant, we'll need to have some detail in there as to how we're gonna be funding that. Um, the restoration of First Parish Church steeple, um, I'm all for, oh, you know what? By the way, never mind. I live across the street from First Parish Church. I'm not gonna ask or talk about that item at all. Cause I live across the street from it. Um, uh, I mentioned earlier, I am thrilled about the authorization to rescind unused borrowing authority. I think that's really good. At some point, I'd love to see, you know, maybe some articles on, uh, on rescinding non-borrow authority, sort of money that we may have banked. Um, just to, you know, in projects that have been concluded, just to formally close them out. Uh, did I have anything else? Nope, that, that concludes my questions. I'll open it up for the board again if, if anybody has anything else. Julian?
Um, okay, so the, the, um, the article about drainage sidewalk improvement plan. Does anybody know if that includes any new sidewalks?
Which article are you looking at?
Well, mine says twenty-two, but it's probably the wrong number. It's.
Think it's, yeah, it's twenty-two is, looks like.
Yeah, that was twenty-two is the one you had earlier in the week, uh, before four o'clock today. So it, it did change after, after four o'clock.
Yeah, sorry.
Between, I have, I have the same one you have, even though I know it's up, it's not updated. Uh, no, I don't, I don't know the, the details inside of that. Only Scott will have to answer that question for you. You know, be, before next week or at next week's meeting.
Okay, so just to be clear, we send a questions, because I have questions like which roads are gonna be improved and we, you know, what about crosswalks and guardrails? We send these questions to you? Okay, all right, then I guess that's, that is what I'll do. But I do have a general budgeting question that maybe Jason could help me with. So, you know, we have these planters that, that the town planner bought and people have been doing things like decorating the town common. We have to replace trees. Is there a budget for that? Uh, or how do you get a budget? Does a department has a, have a budget for that? How does that work?
It's inside the DPW's operating budget. So they have money for seed, loom, grass, flowers for Memorial Day for, uh, Fourth of July. So that's inside the operating budget.
Okay, because, you know, the most recent um, winter decorations, people just donated stuff, but there is a, so we would go to Scott for that budget?
Uh, I, I thought you were talking about flowers and planters, so I don't, Christmas, I'd make that transmission easier for me.
Okay, so, um, so for example, you know, there were a lot of decorations put on the common and there were some, you know, we filled the planters with, with greens and whatnot. But all of that was, was donated by the five or six people who worked on it. Um, and that's, I don't know that that's really sustainable and people really enjoyed it. So where, but you know, if there is a budget for that, it would be nice to, to know that so we could really do a good job.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess you need to send, you know, whatever cost to do those things. If it was volunteer and donations, we need to know what that estimated cost was, so if we can fit it into the operating budget, we'll add those items.
Okay, all right. And it would be operating budget for the DPW, not, not something on its own.
No, I mean, somebody's gotta manage it and since Scott's already managing things like plantings, why not have those decoration components in there as well? And I can't say I can fund it. I mean, you're super tight as it is. And I gave that report last week. I don't want to bore you with trying to keep it inside the new growth and, uh, the allowance on the two and a half and not eat into that levy capacity. But we, we'll see if we can fit it in or maybe buy less of something in the spring and fall to be able to do the, the winter decorations.
Yeah, this is a really small budget. It's, but it, it makes a difference, I think. And, and people have commented, so that's the reason I asked. Okay, thank you.
Lisa.
On that note, we've been talking about putting trees, again, the, the tree replacement. Where would we put that? I mean, how would we, we'd have to figure out how to fund it and where do we, do we put that at the town meeting as well, saying that X amount of dollars taken from somewhere would be, would be in a recurring, uh, fund? Because you're supposed to replace the trees you cut that are municipal.
Yeah, I mean, this board, I've heard you talk about this before and I've asked Scott and I worked on a, a policy for replacement of trees that are on public lands. So we wanna propose that policy to the board so we can have an executive policy on the replacement. It doesn't answer your question, but you know, if we have, we need, again, money, we can either do an article separate and just have a, an article that has money in it for trees. Couple caveats to that. Somebody like Jason has to manage when money comes out and it's appropriate and all that kinda stuff. Or we could put it in the operating budget inside of DPW to purchase trees. I don't, I mean, we went over Scott's budget at length. I don't remember if the trees, um, I know tree removal was on there for diseased trees and sick trees and hazards, but I don't know about, uh, dollars to replace. So I, I'll have to ask Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the, uh, the draft warrant? All right, I think we've had a good first run-through. Um, Tim, thank you very much for putting that together. I look forward to our next meeting and getting into more details. Um, that concludes that item. Next up is we have review of draft legislative priorities.
Mitch, uh, Mr. Chairman, there's no public comment on this?
There, there's nobody raising their hand. If, if anyone wants, wants to, I, I see the names of people that are attending right now. I think they, they know the drill, that they can raise their hand at any time. But I'll repeat that for anyone watching at any time during our meetings. You're welcome to raise your hand and I will recognize you for pretty much any agenda item. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, and sometime later, um, I don't know which meeting yet, we will have, my assumption is the way it's always been done in the past is a joint meeting with appropriations where we'll have an annual budget hearing. Uh, and that's a more form. And that's a more formal process of soliciting feedback, although we pretty much handle everything like a hearing. So we're like that.
The twenty fifth of March, sorry.
Okay, great, good to know. Draft of legislative priorities letter. So every year, the board sends a letter to our legislators with some suggestions as to things we would like them to strongly support. And then we meet with them a couple of meetings later. Usually that meeting is in March. They had a conflict among all of them with an important event. So that's been rescheduled to, I think it's the first meeting in April. Is that right?
April.
Yep, so that's been confirmed with them?
Yes.
Excellent, that's fantastic. And so the office has prepared a letter, which I will bring up at my end, but not for sharing, but it's in the packet, listing a number of things. And this is the time for the board to decide, maybe there's something that shouldn't be a priority. Maybe there's something else that should be a priority or something to rephrase so that this letter can be sent out. With that, any comments, Kristen?
Um, if I remember correctly, Chapter ninety is tends to be the number one thing on this letter. And I thought it did go up this year under Maury Healy. Am I wrong about that?
It was a supplemental gas tax adjustment that they did. I don't remember the number. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, and I think I think the the proposal funds a little bit more than a baseline, but probably at a give or take the same level as prior years. I don't like it. The the what's possible. So the I'm trying to remember, at the MMA conference, the governor and lieutenant governor spoke about the Municipal Empowerment Act that they're proposing. And one of, if I remember correctly, one of the items in that is for a two year rolling plan for Chapter ninety. So you have a little bit more advanced notice on that. And in our letter, we we do express support for the Municipal Empowerment Act, which has something about that, and I don't remember the detail of it. But that's on the, I know the governor's website has the details.
Okay, yeah, I just remember reading something about it, but
Okay, it can always go up more.
Yeah, exactly, right. So I'm sure that's where that comes from. Okay, I'm I'll hold the rest of my comments till after.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Julianne?
Okay, so I there's a couple of things that that I thought we had talked about, that we were going to ask the legislators. Well, actually, one thing, the electricity aggregation application that we're we're doing. I thought we were going to ask the legislators to work with DPU to speed that approval process, because they approved one in the last year. Weren't we going to mention that?
Yes, I'm glad you brought that. So at at our public meeting that we had, I think it was our last meeting with our aggregation consultants. I think they said that the state has very recently accelerated that dramatically. But it can't hurt to include in the letter. I think it's a good idea to add something like, you know, support you know, accelerating the the aggregation approval process or whatever.
Okay, and my second thing is, and I want my board members to please weigh in on this, because the MBTA adjacent program that we're we have to do is, you know, it's sometimes the talk of the town. And one of the things that that I'm I'm kind of worried about is that, once we do the zoning, a developer will come in and build his choice of what he wants to put in, whether it's apartments, condos, duplexes, single family homes, or cottage housing. And I I wonder if it's worth having a conversation with the legislators to to find a way so that the town can have some input into what what we feel is is housing that that our town needs. Like, I'm not sure that we need high rises. What I what what my personal experience is that we we need single family home, more single family homes, whether it's the cottage housing or whatever. So I I want to ask my fellow board members if they're hearing conversation also, and if it's worth having a talk with them.
I would go along with that. I think there should be in terms of what how, and I mean, although I think, I don't know if you can limit it in your own bylaws, but I really agree with Julianne on that note, because we're a smaller community. We like our residential and our smaller homes and that sort of thing. So I think that should be something that we consider, because when we keep talking about MBTA and where we're putting it, I think it's important to take into consideration that a developer does what a developer wants. We don't have any control.
From what I remember, the MBTA requirements are, is it fifteen units per acre? I don't think within that they say how those must be constructed. High rises, townhouses, small houses, et cetera. I think I I I mean, we're not at the planning board. And and the planning director isn't here, so we are going to guess. But I would imagine, from everything I've read, that's the requirement is, you know, fifteen housing units per acre. And we could probably within that, as long as we're adhering to that, say they have to be X, Y, or Z. But that's really, that's really a question for the planning board and the planning director. So I don't know. I'm not sure what question to ask or what what we could put in the letter.
We may not be able to say what type, but we could
Yeah.
write concerns or how to go about getting some guidelines.
It 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 just seems, you know, that people are are recognizing that this is an unfunded mandate. And once, once the zoning happens, where do we? If if it, does it really go to planning? Like, if it goes to planning and some somebody comes in and says, I just want to put in an apartment complex? Can planning deny it without the state saying, you know, the town, the town will have some input into what kind of housing is put up on these, you know, at this fifteen acre, fifteen units per acre thing?
I I think it would be helpful, you know, given that that's a really critical zoning bylaw that's going through through the process, that, you know, whether it be at our at our next meeting or or certainly before town meeting, maybe the planning director and possibly the planning board chair could join us to walk us through a little bit of the the bylaw that's being proposed and its impact. Again, my high level understanding is the requirement is, the primary requirement is to zone for fifteen housing units per acre.
Right.
Once that is zoned, then that is a by right construction. And just, I mean, we could, you know, in theory, we could do that on our own anyway, without the MBTA requirement. Have multifamily housing. We do allow multifamily housing in some areas. That it just needs to, you know, any application needs to abide by the zoning. It's not like a like a forty B situation where things are taken out of our hands. Luckily, we're above that threshold. But so, you know, we would have to go through the normal process once it is zoned that way. So we'd have to go to planning board for site plan review. If there are any special permits or variances that are needed, we'd go to the zoning board. Like, just about anything. I I I I, Kristen, I see your hand. If we're going to add something to the letter, I want I want to know what it is, and I don't know if we know enough to ask that question. You know, maybe
I agree, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it could be something something that we just sort of, you know, try to learn a little bit more before we meet with them and then ask some intelligent questions when we're meeting with them.
Yeah, it'd be great to have a planning board person, you know, explain, because
Speaking, I I'm sorry to interrupt. Speaking of planning board person, there happens to be Amy Paretsky, a member of the planning board, has just raised her electronic hand. If it's all right with everyone, rather than concluding our conversations, I'm going to allow Amy to speak. Maybe she could enlighten us a little bit. Hi, Amy. By yourself?
Sure, Amy Paretsky, forty seven Indian Meadow Drive. And I am on the planning board, but I'm not speaking for the whole board. They didn't know I was calling tonight. I did watch an MMA presentation today. It was like an hour long at noon, and I can send it out to everybody. It was really informative. But like, the main thing that they stated is this is a housing bill. It's not for affordable housing, although we're allowed to ask for up to ten percent. But it's to build housing. And unfortunately, I think what Julianne's trying to say is there are a lot of people in this area looking for homes, like single family homes. We only have like five on the market all of the time, and people want to build equity. They don't want to rent at twenty five hundred dollars to three thousand dollars a month for a single family. But unfortunately, this ruling doesn't say what type of housing you have to do per town. We just have to say, like you said, Mitch, fifteen units per acre, and it's up to the developer to do whatever they want. They can do fifteen apartments, any amount of bedrooms. They could do single, single family, they could do townhouses. It's really their option. But if I am hearing what Julianne's trying to say is like, maybe she wants to ask the delegates, ask the state, did they really think about the need this is filling? Like, if people really want housing in towns, like single family homes that people are looking for, it seems like if it's a blanket statement, fifteen units per acre, the developers are going to do what makes them the most money. But is it really what the people are looking for? And it's something you could ask the delegates? To have the delegates ask the state? But will it change? I don't know. Like, the way I listened to it today, they're being really strict about it, and they're threatening other things. Not only are they taking away their original four grants, they added thirteen more. And Maury Healy has also threatened to take away school money and money for bridges and roads if you don't comply, because there are some towns now that are pushing back. So she's probably trying to stop a mutiny with the state and get people to comply. So there have been some threats going out there. I don't know how it's gonna roll out. But they did also make it known that this is just zoning for housing. They're not saying you have to build it. So it may not happen in certain towns, but there are a lot of threats by the state that they want you to do it. And they're pretty strict about this has to be by right, and you're not allowed to put any restrictions on for anything. Like, if you even have a site plan review that slows it down or makes it difficult, the state might flag it. Like, they want this to happen. And and they don't want any pushback. But I mean, I don't think that means it's not worth asking the delegates to ask the state. You know, is this really filling the need that they that they want to fill? Because even in mayor, was it the Boston mayor, Wu? Had a statement recently in January where she said that people want homeownership, or they actually move out of apartments into a house, and they're building up their own equity. And it really makes them feel like they're part of a community, and they have, and they own something. So I know I'm going on and on, but this MBTA bylaw was a quick Band-Aid to try to get housing. But I'm not sure it's filling the real needs that people have, which is affordable housing and single family homes, which people want to buy, or townhouses or condos, because the developers are just coming through and putting in rental units, which is just making money for them and causing like the seniors or even young new home buyers, you know, they'll never be able to buy a house if they're paying three thousand dollars a month for one bedroom apartment. So I don't think they'll change it, but maybe it would be good for the state to hear the concern. And sorry, I'm not sure if I was saying what you were trying to say, Julianne.
You were saying it very clearly for me. Thank you very much.
And I'll send out to the Board of Selectmen, the MMA presentation I watched today. It was only an hour, and it was to the point and very clear and answered a lot of questions.
That'd be great. Thank you, Amy.
Okay, thanks. Good luck.
Thanks. Julie, I I just want to finish with Julianne, and then we'll move over to Kristen and then
Yeah.
Did that help you clarify something that you think we should add to our letter?
Yes, if we can, you know, if we can do it as succinctly as Amy did. Yes, I because I really believe that there's a lot of young families looking for houses in certain price ranges. And I don't know that, you know, that that that's going to be accomplished with this MBTA housing mandate. But I have one more thing that I wonder if we should talk to the legislators about, and that's a problem we have in this town and other towns, and that is the the big trucks. You know, they they have to rest, the truck drivers have to rest. And there doesn't seem to be enough places, designated places for them to do that. So is that a topic that we bring up? You know, in April, when we talk to them or some other way? But but obviously, you know, we know it's a problem in this town. So how do how do we ask them to designate more more truck stops for them or, you know, suitable resting places?
I think that's more local. I think that it's a matter of someone wanting to build a truck stop or us requiring, you know, the next warehouse that gets proposed, and I'm rolling my eyes in the hopes that maybe there isn't one. You know, maybe the planning board and their site plan mandates that. I don't not sure what the state can do.
Well, it's the highways. The highways are run by the state, so
Oh, okay, so you're talking about a long two ninety Mass Bike. Okay.
I mean, that's that's where my mind went when Julianne
Okay, yeah, no, you're right. I thought I thought local. I thought because we have a problem of trucks stopping and parking and sleeping with the driver sleeping.
Yeah. On the highways.
Yeah.
But if there were rest areas along the highways, they wouldn't come to Northborough and Marlborough to do those things. They would be doing them on the side of the highway.
Yeah.
So that that's a really good one.
I think that's a really good one.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, okay, so I think I think we have something that we can. Diane, I I assume that you're the draft person of this. You can craft something there. Was there enough of the MBTA conversation that that you might be able to to pull something out of that?
Yes, yes, and I can I can work offline as well. I can get some information.
Yep, perfect. Okay, thank you, Julianne. Thank you for those good ideas. All right, Kristen, you had your hand up for a while.
Yeah, well, actually, speaking of traffic and safety, no surprise, that's where I was going. But I think, and Julianne, you might remember this, in a previous year, and maybe you, Mitch, but maybe it was before you, there was something about a bill that Chief Lieber had thought was a good idea, that one of our unofficial traffic and safety people found something about red lights and cameras or something like that.
Julianne.
That the state was thinking about doing. And I I think we did get it into one of these letters one year. So maybe that's worth looking into and seeing if Chief Griffin is also in favor of that and I'm doing a little digging and seeing what what we said in previous years. And I can certainly ask Rachel Armstrong. She's the one who found it in the first place. It was a bill that was proposed once upon a time that didn't go anywhere. So maybe if we add it to our letter and our, with the support of our police department, if they are still in support of it, that could be something good we could do.
That could be something good we could do.
I, I, I agree with you, Kristen, and, you know, I couldn't. I, I'm not very good at wading through these bills, and I couldn't find any really active bill on that. But. I, I, I would agree that. Let's, let's mention it, because it's a, it's a very benign bill. A, a town our size can only put in one. And it doesn't go to your insurance. It's, you know, just kind of a notification and maybe a small fee, so. It's, but you know, it's, it's an additional safety feature, so.
We have a couple of really dangerous intersections in our town. Where there are a lot of accidents and. I don't know, maybe we could pick the best one and whatever.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kristen. Lisa, I think you had your hand up also.
Yep, and I, I, I wholeheartedly agree with the other board members on that. I think it's time that we've. We came in some other cities and towns and different states have used it, so I'd like us to be able to do something like that, so even with the schools, by the schools. Um, so I've got a couple of things. I don't know if we can ask the legislators about this, but um, on the ballot, you know, there was the millionaire tax. That was supposed to go to education and care, like they had seventy-one million for early education and care. And two hundred and twenty-four million for K to twelve education, which here he says will guarantee access to free lunch. Two hundred and twenty-nine million for higher education, four hundred and four, four hundred and seven seventy-year mark for transportation programs. And this goes on, you know, there's a critical highway bridge and fix and maintain roadways. So there's money that was supposed to come from that millionaire's tax. When does it come to us? And how, do we have to ask for it? Do we have to? Uh, send a list, you know, running list of what we needed for? How do we access that millionaire's tax? That was passed on ballot? That's one of the questions. Um, does that sound like? Thing we can ask them about?
Of the recollection that that is covered in that Municipal Empowerment Act. I'm, I'm trying to take a, a quick look. But I'm not, I'm not seeing the details right now.
So I'm looking at one of the, obviously, I'm reading. I'm reading it here.
Okay.
Um, but there's, I mean, there's money out there for that. I just don't know when, I mean, that was last year or the year before. They were gonna do that, right? So, I mean, that might be one of the, because it's money, it's already put aside that we could. Get maybe a little bit of information and money, you know, response on. Overview, do we normally put in four pages or five pages of things to the delegates? Is this like overkill?
We do.
I think, you, you know the history on this, right?
Yeah, we, I think we deleted a lot. Probably four or five pages. Just was graphs and, you know, explaining what each thing was, yeah. And I felt like just trying to get more to the point. Think you lose interest.
Yeah, I would, I would say that, that would be true. Um, and I, and I did find the school bus thing. It's right here. That's why I knew I read it. It says streamlining procurement for electrical school buses and charging infrastructure by allowing. Single procurements for both under chapter thirty B. That's where I saw it.
Okay.
I'm a little concerned about electric school buses. I like hybrids, but I'd rather give you half a school bus and a full school bus under electric. But um. And I, and I wanted to just say, the increasing the maximum local option of meals tax from point seventy-five percent to one percent. For sales of a meal right now. Restaurants, foods, everything else has gone up so much, that even though we're talking, you know, point two five percent. I think that's, that's difficult. I mean, that's more of a, of a business. I, we need to make money somehow. And, um, and I just think that that's one of the places where people are getting hard hit right now. They're not going out as much because the cost of. Having dinner hamburgers are eighteen dollars a hamburger now. That's a lot of money for going out and having a hamburger. But um. I, I wasn't enamored about that.
That's, that's a local option, so that's something that we don't have to bring forward to town meeting if we don't like it.
Okay, but that's on this, that's on this legislative.
Okay, that's, that's one of the bullets in the Municipal Empowerment Act. That's, I, I imagine. That from uh, the state's information there. I think it's good to have that option. I, I also would be hesitant to, to bring it forward to town meeting. But I, I think it's helpful to have that tool available if we're ever in a, in a position where it does make sense.
Okay, I just wanted to, you know, express the fact that we do care about our businesses, and we don't want to think that we're not, not concerned about them. Maybe you could explain to me on the updating borrowing rules for school projects to increase from thirty to forty years. The bond term to more closely reflect the life expectancy of a project. We've been talking about projects being fifty-year projects. Buildings being fifty-year buildings. I don't think that's realistic. I, I, I think that's way too old. I think you have to look at thirty years instead of fifty, because. What we're experiencing now with the schools and the municipal buildings and everything else going on, it's because. We've tried to push it to the fifty years, when your roof. At most is twenty years. Your, your appliances are at most five years now. I mean, I don't know what happens when they get into the school situations, but. But it's unrealistic to think that the materials that we use today to build and the, and the electronics and everything else that we have. Really is supposed to last for a fifty-year period of time.
I, having been through some school projects myself. What I always learned was that the expectation is that the. The building would be useful and the building envelope would be basically useful for fifty years. And then you reevaluate, and you might be able to get another twenty-five or another fifty years, but certain components do, do break down roofs. You, you replace the twenty-five years. Uh, HVA systems around the same thing, windows also. You generally have to replace, so it, it, a fifty-year expected life for whether it be a fire station or a school or anything else, doesn't mean. You don't do maintenance and sometimes large-scale maintenance during that process. Um, but it means the building as a whole, you should expect to be useful for that time, and I, I think extending. Again, you know, a forty-year loan, who is, this is essentially what this would allow a town to do. Um, you could imagine the amount of interest you would pay there. There are many towns that are not as financially flexible as Northborough is. And there are some towns that I'll bet would really want that and take advantage of that. I, I doubt we'd ever do that here. Um, but. Um, you're, we certainly, certainly wouldn't need to do it here, but I think it's, it's a good option for, to have.
Basically, this, this is like being able to take a thirty-year mortgage on your house.
Exactly, so right now, the, the law says that a town can't take anything longer than a thirty-year loan out. A thirty-year mortgage out, if you will, a thirty-year bond. Um, this would allow it to be up to forty years.
Okay.
All right, then, it's, it's just the loan part. We have to look at the. The end, end of it. I would like to move up. The importance. Of the. Uh, an act creating a municipal and public safety building authority. I think that's. That's probably on page three. I'd like to see it move up a little bit sooner than three in terms of level of importance.
I agree with that.
Me too.
Can we put it as number two?
I'm not optimistic, but I think. Yeah, cleaning it up makes sense.
It's, you know, it's a wish list, so. It's most important. I think by you get the twenty-fifth wish, you're like, yeah, yeah, talk to the hand because he asked for too many already. So I think that would be great. Um, I mean, I'm also wondering too, you've got like page four and five. Um, you talk of specific. In addition to legislative priorities set forth in the letter. Uh, below is a list of specific earmark requests for in various infrastructure projects and Northville anticipates pursuing in the upcoming years. When you do that, you actually get, you know, that, oh, we'll send you bone, we'll give you money for that, because I think that's pretty good.
Yeah, we're generally the recipient of, of one or more earmarks each year. Sometimes they are ten, fifteen thousand dollars is. Important things. I think Fire Department got one recently, um, maybe six months ago. Um, sometimes they are. Occasionally, a town will get something that's substantive. You know, you might, you might get a half a million or a million dollar earmark.
Okay, because we, I mean, the three, the three things here look pretty good. Um, the acid but drainage repair project. And, and I, you know, it's a forgotten part of a town's infrastructure until they begin to fail. So this is a case with the Asabat Hill neighborhood. Over the past three years, several large sinkholes. Have appeared within these roadways. A full drainage system evaluation was conducted in two thousand nineteen. Uh, they're found to be a systematic pipe failure throughout the neighborhood. The result is causing severe deterioration in the roadway. And will likely cause additional sinkholes to appear throughout repairs. The town cannot reconstruct the road until these repairs are completed, which is estimated. To be costing eight hundred thousand dollars. Northborough is committed to perform a million dollars of roadway construction if the Commonwealth can assist by funding. I think that's really important. I mean, that's been something going on for a while, and um. Uh, you know, it's highlighted. Here, I'm glad it's highlighted here, but, you know, again, maybe, maybe move it up a little bit. And of course, um, this would be my last comment is the. Number two sidewalk repair project. So it's looking again for curbs. It talks about curbs. It's going on and on, much, much like complete streets and everything else is doing. We keep asking for monies and help. But when was the last time we actually had a sidewalk built? Couple of years, five years? So I mean, I think it's kind of important that. We start working on some sidewalk stuff. We must have, we must have had some money somewhere to do it, and.
I'd say, yeah, I think it's, that's a reasonable question to ask him to get from the DPW director on recent sidewalk projects.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know mostly they've been focused on replacing existing sidewalks. To make them safer, but I. I don't know if they've reported to us on any of the specifics.
And it's also. The end of February, so they might not have done anything too, too recently, but it would be interesting to know if they did anything in fall. You know, that's a good time to. Repair pavement, right?
And did, did, did DPW director provide a project update? Um, not at our, I wonder if um.
He, he did, excuse me. He did. That memo, when it came to us, I think we disseminated it to both groups. I'll resend it to the board. I'm not sure if we did, but. I wouldn't see why we wouldn't, but it's like a four-page memo that gives them an update on all the projects.
Yeah, we'll share that.
Other questions or comments from the board on the legislative priority letter? Laura.
I just have one question. Can you please tell me what the community compact programmer request is?
Tim, would you be able to?
Yeah, it's, it started. Probably five years ago under a different administration, and they just kept it rolling, so they were trying to, just like the Empowerment Act. Former governor had the same idea of building a relationship with local communities, and they would have. Incentive grants that you could demonstrate you're going to. Uh, make public services better for the community that you serve. So, example. Another community I was in, we, we wanted online permitting software, so we made the case that if you. Bought the software, we would continue the maintenance and licensing agreement, but they did the initial uh, payment of that. Licensing in that software upgrade, so we can do permitting and expedite permitting and, and give. A better level of customer service and tracking and so, so that's, that's how. It worked from a grant perspective. It's just about money that they set aside for competitive grant rounds for those type of initiatives. Just by way of example, I'm sure there's, you know, the state will tell you a more flowery version. I'm just trying to give you the. Did and what, what we got out of it.
Thank you. Diane, thank you very, very much for uh. For putting this together. I think this is great. You know, the comments I was gonna make have already been echoed. I think, you know, making mention of the Municipal Empowerment Act. Is really good. There's some really good things in that, that Northborough will be able to take advantage of. Um, adding Asabet Hill was really good. I think, I think its placement is appropriate. Um, you know, ideally, if we could get some substantive funding for the fire station project. Um, that would be very helpful. I think we, you know, we don't have costs yet. That will be, actually, in a couple of days, the Fire Station Building Committee will be meeting. And we'll, we'll start to get some ideas to what that looks like. But we all know it's going to be a lot more than what was forecast early um, a few years ago. So anything the state can do to help would, would be great. Other than that, I had no, no specific questions. Julianne? You are muted, Julianne.
Okay, how's that?
Now we hear you.
Okay, um. Before you get off the topic of the, of the new fire station, um, are there any grants that? Towns apply for, for buildings like that?
No, so one of the items that we mentioned earlier is, you know, the state programs for municipal buildings. And that is a law that we would like to see passed. It has been proposed every year. It's been on our letter every year. Um, to create a program that's similar to the MSBA or MBLC for, you know, that's for libraries. That um, would provide funding for those, and, and there are no grants or other state programs. For safety complexes, for town halls, which is another thing we're gonna be talking about soon. Um, DPW garages and the like are always fully funded locally, unless you happen to get an earmark or something random like that.
Okay, thank you. All right, good.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments on the letter? Okay, all good. Okay, Diane, again, thank you very much for putting it together. Um, you know, work with the, the board members that requested something specific and. Uh, make sure those are in there, and let me know uh, when it's ready for a signature, and we'll send it on.
Sure, that, I'm sorry, um, to interrupt you, but I just wanted to remind you, I think there's a motion.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I have a motion.
That will just allow me to work with the town administrator and with the chair to update that.
To authorize.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Would someone like to make a motion?
I would, but do you want me to change it a little bit? Do I need to add Diane in there, or can I just say?
Uh, I mean, no, I, I think it says town administrator, and town administrator is delegating that to Diane.
Okay, great. All right. I moved the board vote to authorize the chair and town administrator to finalize and sign. The legislative priorities letter and supplemental earmark requests. For discussion with our state legislative delegation at the April eighth board meeting.
A motion made by Kristen seconded by, I'll give it to Laura. Uh, any other discussion?
Are you, are you, are you signing it for the rest of the board, Mitch?
Yeah, typically, a letter is signed by just the chair. But Diane will, will work with you on the items you suggested, and Julianne on the items she suggested and so forth as part of that.
And we'll all see it again.
Okay, all those in favor, uh, Kristen?
Hi.
Laura? Lisa?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. We have, well, we almost have our letter.
Yeah, thank you, Diane.
Put together, and I agree, it is, at its length, it is shorter and simpler and thus better than prior years.
Thank you.
So that's great. Um, next up, we have member reports. Let's see, in the order on my screen. Julianne, do you have any reports tonight?
Um, yes, thank you. So, uh. I, I talked to a couple of people on Cultural Council about the new. Minutes format suggestion that we talked about at our last meeting. And I, I wonder if we should, and I don't know if um, anyone and. Uh, and on the staff has. A list of all the chair people that they could maybe send that out to them and. Um, just say, you know, these are, we're thinking about that, and if they have any comments. Because Cultural Council had, the, the couple of people that I met with had some. Had some concerns about, for example, when they do grants, you know, should that really be? had some concerns about, for example, when they do grants, you know, should that really be recorded in a public meeting? Um, they, they wanna be respectful of people's privacy. So I think, I think, you know, we should, we have to talk about that, that new minutes format, if I'm using the term correctly. Um, so that's one thing on my list. And um, I'm gonna cut down my reports. Oh, um. So the, you know, it's time for reappointments of boards and committees. And I just wanna read something from the website, which is interested residents are invited to submit an application to serve on a board committee or commission to the selectmen's office no later than March fifteenth twenty twenty four. So please, um, I hope a lot of people are interested in applying for positions and now's the time to do it. So I guess, I guess I'll end my report there. Thank you.
Thanks, Julianne. Kristen, any reports tonight?
Yes. I do. Um, so my most important really big deal thing to say tonight is that there is a public information and input session tomorrow evening at the Town Hall Gym about the, the study for the new town hall. It starts at six thirty PM. And everyone should come. Um, and uh, well, I'll just read the rest of the things I wrote, but this is one of those things that's easy to ignore, you know, oh yeah, they're gonna build a new town hall, whatever. But considering all the expenses that the town has um, right now coming up, it's good to know why we need a new town hall or a renovated town hall and what the options are for the, the best way to go about getting us there. Um, and it's my understanding that Tim has also, do you have a video, Tim?
Yes, we did. I did a, a quick promotional video to get people to come to the meeting. So it gave kind of a we looked at the building envelope and then we had Andy doing over dub of his voice, just inviting people to the meeting tomorrow.
Okay, where's that video? Is that on the town website?
Uh, it's on YouTube and it's on, I, I, I don't know the technology piece for launching it on the webpage. But I believe Andy did that, so it's, it's located someplace on the page.
There's a link to it somewhere. Okay. Well, I'll find that and, and add that to my, my personal stuff. Um, okay, so that's good. And then, um. March twentieth at seven P, PM. The Community Affairs Committee is having a planning meeting for the annual town cleanup. Um, in the big meeting room in, did I say the library, the big meeting room, library? Um. This year, they want to involve more members of the community in the planning of the cleanup, so they're inviting people from Sustainability, um, our unofficial Sustainability Committee, which is a lot of wonderful people and Jean Cahill, I guess, is the one who is interested in attending the meeting, but um, maybe some other people. And um, and then I guess people from the Trails Committee also, they're hoping to get involved this year, so um, Suzie told me today, she's the CAC Chair, that anyone else who wants to be part of planning the cleanup, she's she's welcoming everyone. That's why she got the bigger meeting room at the library, so. That's March twentieth at seven PM. Um, and then uh, Chief Parenti and I were at Arrow Coffee this morning for an hour. It was delightful to spend an hour getting to know him a little better. He's a lot of fun. Um, and thanks for, to the CAC for organizing all these coffee hours. I know this has been one of many at various coffee shops. Um, we had some good conversations. And um, I added one piece to my um, report. Because I got a, I had a lightbulb moment while Lisa was talking, so um. I did a quick Google search about electric vehicles. Are they more dangerous when they catch fire? Are they more likely to catch fire than gas-powered vehicles? But then I realized like, this is just a quick Google search. So I would love to have the, uh, someone from the fire department weigh in on the possibilities of the danger, the potential danger of electric school buses and/or police cruisers versus gas vehicles. I think that would be, if they wouldn't mind, um. Giving us their two cents on that, that, that could be really helpful going forward. And then we, we have a little more information what we're dealing with. That ends my report. Thanks.
Thank you, Kristen. Uh, Lisa, any reports tonight?
Oh, yes. I like what Kristen said. I think the more, I think more information that we get on on these electric vehicles, the better it is. And it certainly can't hurt, but it certainly can help us a great deal. So thank you for the lightbulb. That was wonderful. Um, all right, I have been very busy. And I've done it in ways of actually giving you dates and events. So um, on February thirteenth, I attended the Traffic Safety Committee in which there was this discussion to apply for HCVEs on Lincoln and Pleasant Streets and Crosswalk blinking lights on Lincoln, Pleasant Church, Northgate, Howard Streets, and there may have been a couple more. So they're gonna come forward at some point. Scott's gonna put a list together for the blinking lights. Um, to come forward to us. Uh, but there is, you're gonna be, they're gonna be working on those two streets, mainly because the schools are there. And there's an awful lot of um, truck traffic that is coming down and cutting through. And uh, that's a big concern, um, Lincoln Street and um, Pleasant Street. All right, on the fifteenth of February, um. Our purchase and sale due diligence walk through four thirty-two Whitney Street with the reps from Sudbury Valley Trustees and the DCR Town Planner and Conservation Agent was cut short by a formal complaint by the seller. We talked about um, making sure we can be able to do our due diligence and taking care of what has to be done to be able to um, complete the PNS correctly. And I think we're already taking care of that. Um, for a conversation we had a little earlier with Tim. On uh, February twentieth, I spoke to the Town Planner of Hudson and the Director of DBI, which is the Downtown Business Improvement District. They offered to come here to make a presentation on their success with their downtown business development. Um, or invited us to come there for a tour and lunch. So I think we should probably take them up on either one. Oh, lunch in Hudson's pretty cool, so maybe we should go there. Just saying.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think that's a great idea, Lisa.
Okay, so, so then, um, on the twenty first, um. I co-presented congratulatory certificate for the ten-year anniversary of the Doll Men's Club with Laura Zaitin. Um, it was very exciting. We had a couple of the delegates there and, uh, oh yeah, there were brownies passed around, I think. Um, thank you, Laura, for putting all that together. Um. On the same night, the Town Offices Feasibility Committee met and presented four options for locating our, our town offices. Tomorrow night's joint meeting agenda, it's just repeating what Kristen had said, February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM at the Town Offices Gymnasium for Public Participation to help with the choices. On the twenty-second of February, I attended the Appropriations Committee with a DPW budget presentation. Um, last meeting longstanding member Rich Nieber resigned. Uh, we would like to extend our heartfelt appreciation for his years of service. Uh, he has put in a lot of time, he and, um. He has put in a lot of time. Um, the committee is now a member short. And those interested in applying for this seat, please send the application and letter of interest to, I believe, Diane Wackel. All right, on the twenty-third, I attended the Oars Workshop at the Library, um. And learned of the potential project to remove a, a main stem dam at the Aluminum City location. Um, right now, in the report that they had, they said Northborough has sixteen dams. Two are high hazard. And those are Hot Brook Dam and the Cold Harbor Brook Dam. And one is a significant hazard, which is, uh. Look at me, I can't even find where this. Maybe it probably that's the Aluminum City location. So they did a, a, a long, they had a long talk about how the dams are causing problems with so many different things and they're trying throughout, throughout the state anyway, to remove as many as they can. Um, both by prioritizing the damage if something were to fail. Um, also discussed was the cleanup possibility of Bartlett Pond and Asabet uh, under the Aqueduct Bridge over Hudson. The Oars representatives also offered to share their presentation with us in a PDF. And I will forward it when I get it. And I don't know where you might like to put it or, or use it as a, um. You know, reference material. Um, and we would like to thank the Oars for coming to Northborough and sharing the incredible work they are doing. The Sustainable Northborough, uh, Jean, um, Cahill will offer a walk workshop on invasive plants led by the Sudbury Valley Trustees on April sixth at Edmunds Hill Woods. I don't know what the time is. And finally, for tonight, um, I would like to recommend that we put aside some time to prepare and create, um. The Traffic Safety Mission, as well as a town-wide mun- municipal sign policy of appearance consistency for our town municipal buildings, such as the Senior Center, Library, Town Offices, Police and Fire, as well as the DPW or any other building that we have or acquire. I think it's, we still can't seem to get a, a theme, uh, one, one look in any part of our town for any, any of our things. And I think to starting with the municipal uh, buildings is very important. So I do know that the Senior Center has a lovely carved, uh. Green with gold lettering, uh, between, um, granite pillars. And that Peaslee School started the same type of a look when they did um, their new sign. And I would like to be able to put something aside for us to decide what we'd actually like to see on these properties that, that's all the same. Other than the name change. Um, and I hope that the board agrees with that, um, that unity of, of appearance. And that concludes tonight's minutes or my reports, and I will send it right in, so you don't have to type it all over again.
Thanks, Lisa. Uh, Laura, any reports tonight?
Thanks for making that comment about consistency, because I think some of those nice signs do really pop and it, and it's a nice idea, so thank you. For my report, I was delighted to celebrate the Doll Men's tenth anniversary. Thank you to all of our board members for signing the proclamation. They really appreciated it and it was a great turnout. It was just, it was a nice thing to celebrate. Um, they read the original agenda that they did ten years ago and they had some really fun questions that they asked and we repolled the answers and it was just a really fun day. I'm looking forward to Thursday when Lisa and I will be doing uh, office hours at the Bistro Se La Vie. Thank you so much to the Community Affairs Committee for putting so much thought into these fun events. Um, I wanted to let everybody know that early voting for the March fifth presidential primary is being held all week at Town Hall during regular business hours. The election is next Tuesday, March fifth. Polls are open from seven AM to eight PM. And vote by mail ballots must be returned by eight PM on Election Day. So many thanks to the town clerk, Andy Dowd, for sending that along to me. And that concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. Um, I only have a couple of things. The first thing, again, I want to congratulate the Doll Men's Club, uh, such a wonderful organization. Um, I unfortunately was out of town, so couldn't attend the party. Um, but congratulations to them and thank you uh, to Laura and Lisa for representing the board um, at that event. Um, uh, more, more boring is, um, we did get a letter back from, uh, council on our question about municipal code and bylaw. And uh, and those details, um, I haven't even fully read it yet. It was a very lengthy email. I know Diane and Tim got copies also, so you know, once, once we digest that, I think we'll send it out uh, to the board as well as to the impacted board, uh, planning board. I know had some questions about that and certainly to members of the Municipal Code and Bylaw Committee. Um, my, my quick reading is that what we look to do is okay with a couple of asterisks and caveats here and there. Um, and, and that was actually written by our Land Use Council, uh, John Ickman, so. Um, so that, that was really good because some of our questions involved applicability zoning, so he understands those details. Um, and that concludes uh, my report. Moving on to town administrator reports. Tim, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, a couple of things, just quickly, I appreciate you letting me share with you. Uh, keeping with the terms of my contract, uh, one of my terms for employment here was to uh, become a certified purchasing agent. So I attended a three-day Inspector General Purchasing Class, uh, and I passed the test. This is two weeks ago now. I think the, the meeting I couldn't make with the D P and the A G, uh, I was in that class. So that's just keeping with the terms and conditions of the contract for my employment. The Town Office Feasibility Space Committee tomorrow, six thirty, you've covered it. Uh, I just, it is a joint meeting with the board. I know, I just wanted to make sure that you know, you could hear the discussion and then find a way forward, a path forward, you know, to get agreement on what the next steps are. In a lot of ways, you know, because we're considering four locations, as the committee eliminates and the board coalesces around the elimination of sites, it makes more work for me, but I wanna be able to deal with some of the vacancies in the buildings we don't select, to put it mildly. So that's just, I, I, I think a good thing just to get some agreement on a path forward. Uh, I did reach out to Jeff Nutting about the goal-setting workshop. Uh, I guess my question to the board, you don't have to answer this now, is, you know, do we wait till after town meeting? Do we wait till after the election? Or do we do it sooner? You don't have to answer that now again, but certainly let me know what your thoughts are about that goal-setting workshop. It's something that we talked about during the interview process and then other board members have mentioned it to me uh, in passing. So I finally reached out to Jeff. And he's willing to do it. There is a cost associated with it. You can pick a Saturday, four or five hours, or we can pick a, an, an early evening or whatever the board likes, but let's determine, you know, when we wanna have that happen. I did speak to an Amazon rep today, uh, corporate rep. I'm gonna have reconnection, if you will, establish a relationship with discussion relative to traffic, truck traffic, no turns and all that kinda stuff. So we're gonna, with the, obviously Griffin's new, I'm new, so we're gonna reestablish that connection. I'm also meeting with the Mayor Mobro to introduce myself and look forward to uh, finding creative ways to work together with the city. So that's gonna happen this week as well. There's obviously other issues that we're dealing with there. And then we're setting a, a meeting for late March with DPU. It's their aggregation plan process that we have to go through. So I think our comment period closes on the thirteenth. And we'll meet with them later on in March, but it's one step along the way to energy aggregation, so that's in movement two. Still working on the LED light conversion. I did make a call to CMRPC today. I'm trying to find if there's a more cost-effective vendor, so that's why that phone call has been placed to CMRPC. They might have other resources that we can use to drive down that cost. And of course, we continue to work on the FY twenty-five budget uh, with the committees and we have meetings every Tuesday and every Thursday. And I just thought of this now as we were talking that, yeah, I know you guys are busy. I should just send you the note when those different departments are going before those particular committees, so if you wanted to listen in or attend, you can do that. Uh, and then finally, under HR, we are happy to announce kind of an upgrade in the payroll process. I don't know if board knows the particulars, but there's no online portal for people to make time off requests or to view uh, or edit demographic information like home addresses, dependent information, all the stuff that happens when you get hired. It all happens in a written form. We are gonna move to an online form and save some money for not mailing out checks. So people can see their W fours and make changes to withholdings and their tax forms are all available through a, a safe portal electronically. Uh, the biggest thing for me is to be able to see when people are out. I know not to call or send them an email or just not expect uh, a response. So it's gonna help, I think, to manage operations overall. So that concludes my report. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Tim. Um, Lisa, you had a follow-up question?
Yeah, just a couple. Um, when you do meet with Amazon, I know we talked, I talked about it at the Traffic Safety about asking if they could um, offer maybe three, three parking spaces up on their in their parking area for the truck drivers to be able to rest on property because you, one of the buildings is pretty much robotic, so there's not that much parking on the property. And um, and on the upper level, I've been to the upper level and I I can't imagine that that whole upper level is always filled either. So it might alleviate some of the problems that we've been having locally. And while you're getting, while you're going up there to talk with them, it might be a, a good question to ask. And while you're getting, while you're going up there to talk with them, it might be a, a good question to ask. Because, um, even though they're subcontractors and they don't work necessarily for Amazon, uh, I think the safety of of everybody on the road and the drivers and their materials in their vans or their trucks as they're driving would be, uh, considered. And that they must have some space to be able to let them, um, you know, put a couple hours in to relax. So I think that would be a, a, a good offer or a good question to ask.
Yeah, the chief, the chief and I drove up there and toured, you know, the existing grounds and will obviously do that again with those representatives. So I mean, I've obviously been in the email chains with all the issues that have gone on. So we're, that's on the top of the list.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, I had a, a couple of follow up items on the Tim, the items you mentioned. Then I'll go to you, Diane, and we've got one member of the audience, uh, that has something to, to say also. Um, on tomorrow night's meeting, uh, Tim, you mentioned that it's joint with the Town Hall Feasibility Study Committee. It's really their meeting that we're attending. We posted because we will be there in, in quorum. Um, so we will, you know, officially call ourselves to order and things like that. But the Chair of that Committee, Bill Pierce, will be uh, the one running that meeting. Um, on the question about when to have Jeff Nutting come in, uh, you make a good point about the election. That although I'd love to do it soon, soon, soon. We know sadly, Kristen, unless we can convince you otherwise, you have said that you will be leaving the board. We know we'll have a new member coming in after the election. If my, my instinct is to say at this point, let's, let's wait until May, um, to get that scheduled. Uh, Kristen, oh, do you have something exciting to announce?
No, I just wanted to say that I think if we asked lazy Kristen, would she like to go to the four to five hour goal setting workshop for a board she's not gonna be part of in the next few years? She would say, no, thank you. I love you guys, but I would rather do a social thing. Um, and I do think it would be nice for your new board member, whoever that may be, to, um, maybe they have some goals. And I'll just give you all my goals before I leave.
Great. Everyone okay with that?
Well, I, I, I agree with letting, putting that off until after the election. I do think we should have one more meeting like we did before. To do, to narrow down what we really wanna do with our goals and such. We've already gotten a head start and I think we've put it off long enough. Yeah, I think we should be able to squeak in, uh, one meeting. Kristen, you don't have to come, don't want, but, uh, but I think it would be helpful for all of us to have that put together before May and not have to, you know, and we can work on Wallace or Mr. Nutting.
Tim, maybe you could ask Jeff for some things that we could work on at a meeting in advance. Um, as to a, a good way to structure that meeting of ours to make his time more valuable.
Yeah, there's actually a questionnaire that board members would fill out ahead of time as well as the town administrator. So we can, we can get that underway. And then the new member will just have to catch up.
Yep, okay.
Okay, and then just one last thing. Um, the meeting for tomorrow night, is it set up so that it's like a dais and, and the questions that can come from the audience can be heard by everybody in the audience to the dais? And the dais answered back to the audience member where everybody can hear? Because the last time when we, when we were there for Metro West, it was almost like a trade show. So it was only like a one-on-one type thing.
Yeah, I, I asked a, a little bit about the setup of that earlier today and it, it will be set up more like with, with rows of chairs. And it's a, it's a presentation with Q and A and there will be a microphone runner. So it's, it's there to allow a, a large, hopefully a large capacity, um, to attend.
Yeah, I got to preview the, as a member of that committee, I got to preview the presentation, the outline of the presentation and it is very much, uh, um, the architects giving, um, a spiel and then Q and A at the end.
All right, great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. With that, Diane, any reports tonight?
Yes, thank you. Um, I did promise you a personnel update. And I got some good stuff to share. I'll do my best to get that to you this week.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's all.
Great. Thank you very much, Diane. Um, we do have Amy Peretzky with an electronic hand up. Amy, I'll bring you in. If you could, again, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind.
Hi, Amy Peretzky, forty-seven Indian Meadow Drive. And I'm speaking as a resident who's on the planning board. So it's a planning board statement, but no one on the planning board knows I'm making this statement. Um, it, it was in common to what you said that you got a letter from Town Council about the Municipal Bylaw Committee. And we weren't supposed to have a meeting the first week of March because it's an election. We're not allowed to meet on election nights. But we made the call to meet next Monday because we wanted to have a second meeting about the, um, warrant articles before the warrant closes. So if anybody doesn't know, we are gonna meet on Monday night versus Tuesday night in case anyone has any questions about the warrant articles. But I also wanted to, um, ask Mitch if you could forward a sent email before the, so we could see it.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you might have thought we weren't having a meeting, but we added another one.
No, I, I, I just wanted to, to, to give it a read through and I'll, I'll probably send it out tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, um, let's see. Okay, uh, that concludes all of the reports. Is there any other business to come before us this evening?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so do you or Tim or Diane or anybody have any idea what our March agendas are going to look like? Because it sounds like the first meeting in April will be the legislators primarily and then town meeting. So, uh, you know, I, I kinda like to think about things way in advance and I'm wondering what's, what March is going to bring.
Tim and I usually talk in detail about, about the agendas until the week prior, so I don't have a lot. Tim, do you have, uh, any?
There's two things we know. Um, the twenty-fifth of March, you'll have a public hearing on the budget. Um, the eleventh, you'll sign the warrant. And then Diane, we talked about two other things that were like big, big items for the board to do in March. But those are, those are two that go my head quickly.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I can share something with you, Julianne, or with the board tomorrow. I know, um, we do have a street acceptance this year. We haven't had one actually in several years. Um, so there'll be a public hearing on that, I believe, the first meeting in March. And then I think, I'm trying to think the closing of the warrant and but I, but I can, yeah, I can go through, kinda look back what we did last year and anticipate what's gonna be coming up.
Right. I remember that those meetings coming up to town meeting are usually pretty busy with that kind of business. So I'm just wondering, cause you know, we, we still have ARPA looming over us and
Right.
I wonder if we can have a discussion about when is best to discuss that. So, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lisa?
We're asking those type of questions. Can we, can we get a discussion about the signage so that, do you have to go to town meeting with it? Or is it something that we just create a policy?
You're, you're talking about municipal signs?
Yeah.
Signs on properties we own that doesn't need to go to town meeting.
Okay, so we can just make our own. We can have a meeting to set a policy for ourselves of what we'd like to see.
If, if we need to, yeah.
Well, I'd like to be able to get it so we have it in place, so part of our downtown revitalization and such. But thank you.
Okay, yeah, maybe that, maybe that could go through, through master plan as a process. And or design review.
Well, I just thought too, you know what else is coming up is, um, we usually have the planning board come in to review their zoning articles. I think, uh, uh, either the second meeting in March or the first meeting in April as well.
Okay.
Yeah, the legislators are coming to that April meeting. So if they could come in March, that'd be great, right?
We'll see if they're ready.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody have anything else? With that, I will look for any public comment that anyone, uh, would like to offer. Raise your electronic hand. I'll be happy to recognize you. Going once, going twice, seeing no electronic hands up. Public comment is closed. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Laura to adjourn. Uh, all those in favor, Kristen?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
I also vote I. Vote is unanimous in favor. We adjourned nine twenty-one P M. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful night.